Good evening. I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole of the Village Board of Shore, Wisconsin at 6:13 PM. We have quorum with trustee Warren, trustee McGovern, trustee Stokbrand, and president McCag. Trustees Ursink, Kudo, and Arndorfer are excused for this meeting. We have one item on the agenda this evening, and it is a an overview of the 2026 budget considerations. So, a review of the major drivers and metrics that we're being asked to consider. It will not be a deep dive into department line item budgets, except we will have a presentation from North Shore Fire Department, North Shore Health Department, and North Shore Dispatch. The other departments will be presenting at the next meeting. So, we were provided with a budget, I mean a memo, that walks through the different areas. This is pretty customary. So, I'll turn it over to our finance director to frame up the discussion points that you'd like us to consider this evening.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for your time and for allowing me to review the 2026 budget as it currently stands. As an overview, we've given some introduction and fiscal and economic context, but overall, the main drivers for the 2026 budget continues to be infrastructure mandates for lead service line replacements, future public works facility planning that's upcoming and planned for 2027 budget process and planning, and continued street light system upgrades. We've also estimated that workforce costs with projected wage increases between 3% to 3.25%, and health insurance costs at an estimated 3% are built into this budget. We also have certain shared service agreements, as we previously mentioned, which will be discussed tonight from North Shore Fire and Health Department. And then, for the capital projects piece, we currently have an estimated flat amount that has been input into the budget process to keep the property taxes at a 3% planned increase in the amount of $665,000. Currently, we have a planned decrease presented in the budget for the Capital Projects Fund, but staff is still currently working through all of the capital needs requests, which will be occurring directly following this budget process during the rest of the week and next week as well. So, we're still working through the capital requests at the staff level. We also currently have a 3% increase built into the budget for property taxes as well. So, as we mentioned in previous years and this year, the overall increase in property taxes for previous periods was about 2% historically. Last year, we raised taxes at right around 7%, and this year, we have a 3% built into the 2026 current budget process, which does show a small deficit of about $1,0241 currently. So, in order to tackle this deficit, we could increase our property taxes further. We can increase them up to approximately 5% to be within the levy limit and expenditure restraint boundaries, which of course, as those as that information comes out from the Department of Revenue, we will adjust the budget and make sure those are accurately reflected. We could also spend down some of our fund balance reserves up to the entire deficit of $410,000, and we would still be well within our policy for maintaining a minimum level of fund balance in the general fund. We could also transfer additional revenue from parking, which ended up being significantly less for the 2025 budget process than was originally planned. One of these items could be used to plug the $410,000 deficit, or a combination of all three could be used. And then, as just a summary, the service level initiatives such as anything related to service levels and some of the things we discussed at our previous meetings leading into this 2026 budget, we did decide to defer to the 2027 budget cycle, anything related to service levels.
Are we taking questions at the end, or as we go?
Yeah, if we could just get to the end of the framing, I think that would be helpful.
And then, we do have in the memo financial summary tables, which is just a summary that is also found in the budget as well on the first couple of pages of the budget, just a nice visual for you to have so that you can see that the 2026 requested deficit is $410,000, but the overall fund balance that we have begins at $7.2 million, and so we'll just be a little bit under $6 million for our ending fund balance. Then, we just have some visuals that you can look through. But the last summary for the presentation that's important is of course, a summary of all of the tax increment districts, which we have in the summary to show the projected mandatory closing dates. There's more information on this in the village's long-range planning document that was uploaded to the village's website previously and discussed in previous meetings this year. And then, the remaining budget process and timeline of note would be the next upcoming board meetings during which we can have additional discussion at a detailed level, which would be on October 6th at the Budget and Finance Committee, where we will do a budget review by fund. And then, should we feel necessary, we do have the October 13th board meeting to do additional budget review if it is needed with the ultimate culmination of the public hearing and adoption that will occur on November 17. There's also some just highlights for what our budget communication plan will entail for the rest of the year, and some of the trustee presence that is going to be out there to answer questions related to this budget as needed. I'd be happy to take questions on the detailed budgetary presentation as well as the memo at this time.
Trustee Warren?
As we go?
Oh, I'm not gonna...
Go for it.
If you guys...
I just had a quick question. Can you tell me, maybe I missed this in the memo, but can you tell me a little bit more about the revenue from parking? You mentioned less than planned, and kind of where is that? Can you tell me more about that line item, where it's reflected, what it's coming from? And I would assume it's actually more, you can pull money out of it?
Yes, it makes sense why you're asking this question. So, as part of the 2025 budget process, we recommended that to help plug some of that deficit, whatever was remaining after the special charges that we had created, we would use the parking. As a result, we had estimated somewhere close to $140,000 would be necessary, and that was listed in the 2025 budget. But with the actual results proving to be favorable, we needed less than that $140,000. So, whatever it ends up being, it'll be a less transfer than what we had planned in 2025.
Can you give me an idea of the order of magnitude there? Is it half?
It's probably $100,000 difference, approximately.
So, we spent, we used 100, or we...
You used $100,000 less than originally planned.
There's $100,000 there.
Correct. So, we have, so, in the financial statements that will be audited, that'll be presented in the next couple of weeks here, the ending balance in that parking fund, that entire amount, will be as of the end of 12/31/24. So, we'll know how much is available at that point, but the better gauge is what we have in cash in the parking fund. So, we know we could cover the entire $410,000 deficit balance in total from parking if we needed to. I just don't know the exact amount yet.
Thank you. Does that get you up to speed?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
So, what was the amount that we were considering in the parking reserve? And you said we budgeted $140,000 to plug a budget hole in '25, but it looks like we're only going to use $40,000. Was it like a $600,000 in that fund?
It's approximately $500,000, close to that, yeah.
Okay. I guess, if I may?
Yes.
So, a question about the workforce costs. If the wages increased 3% to 3.25%, health insurance here looks a lot lower than things that I had seen and that I heard in the meeting recently. 3%, I mean, I heard dental was...
I can answer that. We built in, when we last talked, we talked about the budget, we had built in 20% because we didn't have the exact numbers from the insurance broker. And in interim, he came back to us with a 3% increase.
Wow, that's astonishing. I mean, when you see what other... And so, should I think of workforce costs as 6% increase? Right? Would I add the salary wage, you know what I'm saying, and the benefits?
A 3% overall.
No, together, 6, right? Because you have a 3% wage and salary and a 3% health and benefits.
Well, no, it's going to be 3% change in the wage salaries and a 3% change in the healthcare, and the net change is 3%.
Okay, and that's in spite of this dental number that seemed high?
Dental is really a much smaller denominator.
Okay. And then, I guess I was wondering, I mean, the other part that seemed to go up a lot was workman's comp, which Rebecca warned us about, and that's already, that's history because it's based upon past years. Okay, I appreciate your work that you've done on this, and what great news to find out that you could find a health insurance cost increase below 5. That's, is that Robertson Ryan at work, or is that WLM?
R and R.
R and R. I was going to question there, Fee, I won't ask anymore.
Thank you. Trustee McGovern?
I have a question about TID number 3 in the projection for the budget for 2026. It says the TID increment is $965,000. So, if it closes in 2027, would you expect it to be, is that how much additional revenue we would have roughly?
Yeah, that's what is estimated currently per the assessed value.
Okay.
You're going to need to talk into the microphone.
Can you give me a page that you're on? Although, I don't see, are there page numbers on this viral?
No, it's in this fourth.
That, we would only expect around 27% of that because that's the village's share of the total tax.
I do have a question then about capital project funds is maintained flat.
So, the property tax increase at 3% is maintained flat, and in order to keep that as the increase, historically, we have put $665,000 as an allocated amount to the Capital Projects Fund.
So, you're saying that with this, at this early stage, it looks like the property tax levy increase would be 3% for 2026, but of that part, the capital projects remains flat from '25 to '26?
Correct. So, it's the same amount allocated from the property taxes to the revenue that will be financing the Capital Projects Fund. That doesn't mean that only $665,000 of expenditures will be notified, or will be identified by staff to be requested for the 2026 budget. Currently, as it stands, it's a little higher than that, so we would be spending down the fund balance in the Capital Projects Fund currently as it is in the budget by about $300,000.
And just to be clear, this doesn't include any debt? This is just a buy thing?
Correct.
And another question then was, we were going to create a new fund for 2026 for new equipment, I believe that would take 5,000, I'm sorry, over $5,000 that we'd have to use tax levy for? And so, is that, where is, is that part of the capital?
Are you talking about the policy?
Yeah.
So, it wouldn't create a new fund, it's just a guideline? The policy is just a guideline to help us make decisions?
Because I thought it said it was a separate fund that would be only used for, and then we changed the language so it wouldn't be...
We already have a fund for all of our capital projects.
But this equipment, this idea of escrowing just for equipment? You know, that was part of the policy? I thought the original language...
There would be a restriction on the fund balance in the Capital Projects Fund to show that the board has intention to basically save for future capital project?
Okay, and so I can see that in...
It's not a restriction, it's an assignment. So, restriction would be illegal, it's not a restriction. Like, the funding for the affordable housing is restricted by law, right? But assignments is just, hey, we're setting this aside for these particular things.
Okay, and so is that in here somewhere, although, is that, do I see that somewhere?
So, we are still working through the Capital Projects piece of the budget currently.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I have a question. I'm just, I guess I'm going to ask the same question about the capital project budget in a different way, because I'm not sure I understand. So, what's in the budget that was presented to us, just as a preliminary, is the $665,000 or something around there?
As a revenue.
Right. But you mentioned that you're recommending a decrease to $400,000?
I don't believe that's the case. Right now, currently, we have more than the $665,000 in expenditures in that fund, so that means we will be spending down the fund balance by $300,000. So, that may have been what you saw. Because the expenditures are greater than the revenues, so the budget is not perfectly balanced. It's showing that's going to decrease and spend down that Capital Projects Fund balance currently.
Based on the forecasted budget?
Correct. Yes, and we are still working through all of the capital budget pieces with staff.
Okay, so, with, when you want us to comment on the deficit of the 400 grand neighborhood, that is not related to the Capital Projects Fund changing or...
The only thing you might change is put more or less into the Capital Projects Fund, which would then increase or decrease your deficit overall.
Right.
Right? So, if you wanted to increase what you put into the Capital Projects Fund, we would have a greater overall deficit. If you decrease it, we would have less of a deficit.
And, but that technique of managing deficit means that we're deferring capital assets, so it kind of creates a structural deficit, which we addressed last year in our budget.
Right. Yes, so, I would not advise removing planned capital projects equipment, you know, the short-term needs. That's a short-term, one-time budget gap, you know, that we've seen play out at various governments, and we know we can't fill that gap in future years. So, that's why we use the same $665,000 amount, and then, based on what the needs are, we can take a look at the fund balance, and if there are expenditures that need to occur in the immediate future for equipment needs, we can assign or commit a portion of that fund balance after bringing it to the board per the policy.
Sure.
Playing catch-up here, so that $665,000, I want to make sure all this is right. $665,000 flat from last year. It keeps us, it's included in the current budget, doesn't create a structural deficit, and it's with the 3% projection.
So, insofar as you're keeping it flat, it does help create that structural deficit? Because if you decreased it, you would have less of a deficit.
But we would also then be deferring purchases that are necessary for capital assets to function? And so then, we're, eventually, we have to buy these things, right?
I guess my question is, just so I understand, the way you're currently presenting the budget, you're not creating a structural deficit? Just if we use this as a lever to alleviate something this year, going to create a structural deficit?
Yes, because you'd be changing what you've done in the past. So, if historically about $600,000 to $700,000 annually has been a good amount for your equipment needs, and we decrease that, we would be creating an overall structural deficit in our capital equipment financing.
Yeah, that's perfect, thank you. I just want to make sure that the way it's presented, we're not creating or perpetuating a deficit that if we, basically leaving it alone, does not create that...
Exactly. We tried to give you as vanilla of a budget as we could with all of the expenses in there as requested.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, trustee Warren.
No, I just wanted to make sure I was...
But I think you have to note that different things will come into play every year with this budget. So, this is all, it's very soft language, structural deficit. You know, inflation will play a role where they're not, we decide whether we get grants, whether, you know, if the EPA decides we don't have to, we don't have to do our lead service lines in 10 years. If they decide we can do 17, we could really change our budget. So, I think, I appreciate your conversation about structural deficit, but this is all extremely fluid, and it's our job in these seats every year to decide what the priorities are and how to spend it.
Thank you. So, at this time, we can take more questions in this vein. Otherwise, I'd like to hear from the trustees if you have any direction for staff on how to address the deficit that's forecasted.
I mean, I've been really interested for a long time in using some or all of that parking utility surplus, and that would be where I would lean for this year as well.
I guess I'm not interested in discussing how I would meet that, how I would cover that $400,000 until I have gone through this budget with staff and seen what they want to spend on what? Because there's a lot of things in here that we could talk about, and I don't see any reason to make a decision right now about how that $410,000 number could be very different after we go through this line by line.
Absolutely. Glad you reminded us of that. And just to be clear, we are not taking any action tonight. This is just a high-level discussion to keep in mind. So, thank you very much, trustee Stokbrand, for keeping us focused. Trustee Warren?
I agree with the comments from both trustee McGovern and trustee Stokbrand. I mean, my thought process here is sort of really high level. I would like to keep the, I would like to stay at the 3% increase level. I don't want to vote for that. So, using parking, looking at our general fund, I'm open to things. But again, given the increase last year, I'd like to keep the increase minimal as we can, obviously responsibly driving our budget, but keep it as minimal as we can this year. So, I'd like to look at the other levers in there.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree pretty much with what's been said. And I think general reserves always feels like a first place to go because it's already been levied, so it feels like that is a good use of those one-time funds. And it's been our policy to stabilize debt service payments, you know, in that regard, to think of it kind of that way. That said, of course, I look forward to if we can impact that current forecasted deficit in a positive way through our work together in the next two meetings. So, and we have three trustees who have not been able to weigh in. So, what I would ask is that they be briefed on this information and making sure that their questions are answered before we, the next meeting. Are there any discussion points around the communications plan?
I would like your input on that. We started the year not anticipating a number of the possible revenue options that we've already conned through, such as e-scooters, mobile parking, software systems that was deferred until 2026. So, we left our communication plan open, really dependent upon how the budget came out. And so, the options that were provided within the overview memo tonight, you have funds internally that you can pull to utilize on the deficit, but I didn't know how much and where you would like to provide. You know, obviously, people have opportunities to come to our meeting. You know, we would want to go through what our dates are, provide the information, the overview that we have. I don't see a real opportunity for any type of poll, just given the nature of the content that's involved. But what I would recommend is just going through our typical communication channels to continue providing that information and bringing that information forward through those mechanisms. I know that Arthur, with regards to the Sherwood Farmers Market, had said that he was going to provide dates to trustees to attend there. Last year, we did that during the scope of budget season, but I'm not sure if he's been in communication with all of you. I haven't seen a date yet, but I can also circle back with him on that.
When are we due for a village? We do a poll, a survey every three years? When was, was the last one, '23?
'23.
And the timing would be bad anyway, because don't we typically do that in the first quarter?
Correct. Yeah.
I, so, right now, dates that I have, and I think this is an out-of-date communications plan I have from 7th, was there, you had a new one in July? Is the overview is tonight? And then, there's two let's-talk budget? Are those still scheduled for the 17th and the 18th?
Those were, no, those were placeholders at the time. That's one of the reasons why I'm bringing the communication plan back. We had completed those last year specifically because we wanted to educate and then also receive feedback.
Well, we had such significant changes.
Correct. And so, you know, as I sat back and looked at the timeline, you know, we'd bolt in just some placeholders, but, you know, I was wondering if perhaps more an educational route would be helpful, given the fact that I think we definitely got more of the public in tune with what our financial forecast is. And really, as I look at moving into 2026, I see the opportunity for public engagement or education on the water utility end to be far more significant in just explaining what's a part of that financial forecast. But I'm challenged to do that yet until we have some identification from the PSC in terms of how they will consider our water rate case. As I mentioned in email communication throughout the last several weeks, we have submitted a request for a rate case that has never been done before in the state of Wisconsin. We have the joy of going first, being one of the most impacted communities, and so, they've taken an extremely lengthy period of time in order to do that review. But we hope to come back with some positive news.
So, I guess the other component we have to acknowledge here is that we're down an assistant village manager. And so, you know, there's only, you know, you're wearing two hats right now. So, what is that looking like in terms of trying to do like these budget talks? Do we know when we're going to hire?
So, we'll be on a timeline for recruitment irregardless of the budget schedule. Yeah, thank you, just for acknowledging where my time is spent. Communication is important. I'm not sure if we're going to have the same level of attendance as we did as last year. I'm always happy to talk about the budget, everybody knows this. I'm always looking for more groups to talk to about the budget. But as someone who's eager to have a let's-talk and talk about it, I'm not sure if it's the most effective approach with this budget cycle. I'm happy to do it, you know, we'd find a date, I'd find a date, and then I'd do it.
What about posting in budget talks as part of the manager memo?
I am, Scott, I'm going to be talking about the budget in that memo. You're not going to get it this week as a feature, but you're going to have it next week. And so, a lot of this information, it's going to be a little bit more lengthy than a normal feature would be, but it's going to provide all of that same information and track.
The problem is, it can change with each budget meeting we...
Oh, but that's, that's a part of the communication. That's what we want to tell people, right? And we want to let them see how we're working on it as transparently as possible throughout that.
I guess I would say, if there's anything you could do that would be most meaningful, would maybe be put in the village manager's memo, the budget review by fund, if people really want to come in and go line by line, that's going to be, I see here it's village board, is it? Here, it's another place, I believe, it's just the Budget and Finance Committee Review by Fund, October 6th. That, to me, would be important, that you let people know and that we plan ahead.
Oh, absolutely.
And I honestly wonder if we should do that as a cow again now because we have lack, you know, the attendance is what it is tonight.
Happy to do that.
But I think, you know, all those that you did last year, it was a huge piece of your time to do those last year, and I think because we added those two... piece of your time to do those last year. And I think because we added those two fees, it was, it was great that you were willing to put that time forward to do that. And you mentioned attendance was good, but I don't think we need let's talk budget anymore.
Well, maybe just not this year. Don't take it away from me completely.
I think we should, I think we should get back to the staff and I think we should put, put a lot of focus on the October 6th meeting. And if there's any way we can manage that agenda, so it's a budget night. That's, that's my.
That's great feedback. Take all that into consideration. So I'm going to focus more on our standard communication outlets. And what you'll see is probably us building in some of the feedback that was heard last year with kind of setting the stage better for people. And this week's issue, not using it as the feature, but really to back in what's that larger perspective? Because of course, when everyone sees their tax bill, they think that it's just the village, but it's really, we're one of the smaller pieces to that overall budget. So want to provide that perspective, especially in light of some of the school districts conversations with regards to their budget so that people kind of know how to balance that amongst the whole. If you have any thoughts or questions on communications, once we leave here tonight, feel free to connect with me. It's always a fluid thing. I'm a 24 hour thinker, so I'll probably put some more meat on the bone after kind of listening to the thoughts that were discussed here tonight. But that's always welcomed and appreciated. And if you have any other groups who would like to hear about the budget, know that that door is always open, whether it's budget time or not. With that.
Do you want to just provide an update on this in an email?
Sure. Yep. Happy to do that. You'll get that probably Friday.
Okay.
Because I want to recalibrate to get on that right away because of the short timeframe. I just want to acknowledge here tonight that we do have North Shore Fire Department, North Shore Health Department. And I don't see Leanne, sure not yet for Bayside Dispatch, but maybe she'll be popping on in a little bit, but I did want to give them an opportunity to, to come forward and provide the brief highlights from their budgets. As you'll know, from a fund perspective, when you look at the data from 2023 through the 2026 request, our largest increase was coming in the form of public safety. There's also been some discussion with the health department and information previously provided to the board regarding some concerns with the health department because of the significant decreases due to lack of federal funding that came through this, this last year. So I want to acknowledge a director Becky Rowland and her really hard work. Because as we look at the local level, that is the service that I, we have seen most impacted by lack of federal funding or freezing of federal funding. So with that, I think I'll start Chief Whitaker, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Is there something in the packet for this?
No. Just their budgetary information. But I'm going to.
What page would that be on? And I know page 24, I believe, had some. I don't know. We don't have a page here, but I, I think in the packet 24 was.
Like other public safety. That's, that's the.
26, I can see it, red sheet, I think is probably what you're about under. General fundraiser revenues and expenditures, other public safety.
I've got 2025 budget, where I think the year is wrong, expenditure request, other public safety, Bayside, North Shore Fire, North Shore Health, crossing guards, lifeguard. But that must be it.
Correct.
I don't see a column with 2026 either, but I'm assuming, I don't know, page 24 of the meeting packet that.
I meant 26, I see.
Okay. Other public safety, that says 2026. That's good. Okay. And some numbers are blue, some are red. Should it, should it, does it make a difference? I noticed that throughout the budget, by the way. And then sometimes there's, there's asterisks that say see also detail sheets, and I don't see any sheets. That's, I think that's a, a local issue. But okay, so we've got, you're on 23 of the packet.
So I'm going to skip around because I'm going to keep it in the timeframe and I have more slides than I have probably for the time. So I'm going to hit the highlights or try to hit at least something on each slide. So thanks for the time tonight. As was discussed, our budget, we are still finishing it up. The fire department board will meet September 30th. I would expect at that point that they almost have to adopt some level of budget by our pact that binds the seven municipalities together to form the department. We have to have an October 1st deadline on adopting a budget. So we are still finalizing some things. Our municipal, our contributions from the municipalities make up about 78% of our budget. Other revenue is primarily from fees for service. The, there's four pots that make up the contribution that you'll see. Operating, small capital, debt service, which is primarily for facilities. And then the capital, what they call capital resolution funding. So that's for vehicles, larger vehicle. Go ahead. The, our little history on our operating and our in the operating side, municipalities have the intergovernmental agreement. It caps our municipal increase for operating at CPI plus a half percent. So CPI this year will be 2.5 is what the number is. We use the CPI. That was just certified by BLS. So there's another CPI that'll come at the end of the month. There's two different CPI numbers, which can't make it any more confusing than it is. So CPI plus a half. So our, our municipal increase can go up no more than 3%. Go ahead. Yeah, 3%. There's a little history on municipal increase and the CPI. Our average municipal change from 2015 to 2025 is 2.8, 2.08%. The average wage increase during that time period is 2.5. History would show, and I'm sure it's probably similar here in the village, salaries and benefits are going to drive your municipal or our, our budget increase for municipalities. Go ahead. The Village of Shorewood pays a percentage of the overall municipal costs that I'll explain briefly in just a minute. Our total municipal contribution is 14.995 million. It's a 3% increase over 2025. That's, that's what's proposed. Shorewood's contribution to that is 2.613 million. Just from a little perspective, in 1993, Shorewood paid 1.88 million for fire service. You run out inflation over that time, it's 123.5%. So if you adjust the contribution, if you would have maintained your own department at inflationary cost, it would have been 4.16 million compared to the 2.613 million you're paying currently today.
Would you mind just pulling your mic a little bit closer to you? We just want to make sure everyone online.
You can turn that podium.
I'm just going to move it this way. I'm just going to do that.
Yeah, perfect.
All right. So I'm not ignoring you.
Nope, that's perfect.
Reading up the screen. Okay, go ahead. So Shorewood pays the, a percentage, all seven municipalities do, based on a formula that takes into effect equalized value population and calls for service averaged over a five-year period. The Shorewoods projected to increase from 17.35% to 17.43% in 2026. The wage increase are primarily, are most of our employees are represented by a firefighter's union contract. Is 3.25% is the negotiated wage increase for 2026. We're currently finalizing our health insurance renewal. Based on our initial feedback, I'm very jealous of your health insurance renewal and I am concerned about ours. So we are still working back and forth with R and R on our health insurance renewal. And like I said, the board will meet on September 30th. Go ahead. Briefly, the fire department board did a long-range financial plan. That looked at, it's a 10-year period. This is the second time the board has done that. We have seen an overall increase and of demand for service in the seven municipalities of 40% over the last 10 years, where we are at a point where we need to staff an additional ambulance to meet that demand. That takes eight approximate FTEs. We are looking at other revenue sources to do that. None of this is included in that 3% budget. I'm just talking point at this point where we are, we have two other revenue sources. One for talking about increasing our fees for service for 2026. And the other is in regards to increased reimbursement for Medicaid patients that we are still waiting for an outcome from the state on a decision, whether that's going to happen for, where they're actually going to pay us for 2026. So that's out there. As was mentioned before by Becky, and Becky Rowland will probably talk about it. Health department had some funding challenges. We created a case manager position in conjunction with them in 2024. That position was scheduled to move to the health department budget next year. They have some challenges with some reduced federal funding. So we're currently working on trying to figure out whether we can maintain that position in our budget that wasn't expected to maintain in our budget. So we're having some challenges there and we'll have more information on that in the next two weeks, hopefully. Go ahead. There's a little information on calls for service over the last 10 years. Shorewood is keeping consistent with the larger group at about a 40% increase over time. Go ahead. Second pot, a contribution is for small capital. This is for small equipment, replacement of small things in like garage doors, HVAC and roof systems. That's a $33,000 contribution. And I'm, I don't know your budget as well as I know mine, but I'm under, my understanding is in that line item on 23 for North Shore Fire. This is all in the 2.9 million. Is that how I'm reading that? Okay. Go ahead. Debt services for facilities, we did a, over the last five years, a large update of our facilities. That's 158,000, oh, 090. That remains somewhat steady. Both the debt and the small capital has remained steady over the last year. It's a, about a 3% increase there. Go ahead. This is where I think a large amount of what you're going to see an increase, and I'll talk a little bit about this. So our vehicles, fire engines, ladder trucks, the ambulances, we have a life expectancy on those vehicles, the cost of those vehicles has skyrocketed over the last five years. Some were upwards of, at some doubling in cost. And the lead time on those vehicles has gone from, we used to be able to get a fire engine in about a year. It's now four years. So we're ordering these things. What I'm ordering now, we won't see until 2029. So we've had to do some long-range capital and financial planning for this because it's different than what we've done for many years. Go ahead on the slide. So this gives you a little idea, fire engine, which is like a pumper, went from a half million to a million. Ladder trucks from 950,000 to almost 2 million. Ambulances from 270,000 to 430,000. And the lead time to get this has changed dramatically. Go ahead. The capital resolution funds those vehicles. In 2023, the board looked at options to fund, to look at the need, because there was an increased need for funding, just to maintain what we have and what we operate with. After a significant analysis, two options were presented for final review from the board. One was a pay as you go with a five-year commitment for funding. It's basically a cash, pay cash as you go. The increase, there was two options to look at for increases to a contribution to capital. One was a 2024 increase and one was in 2026. And then there was a leasing, lease financing option that was looked at with increased spending between 2026 and 2033. The board at the time made a decision to move forward with option one, which is a pay as you go with the increase to the capital contribution in 2026. So that was coming due, hence the increase you're seeing in your, in the capital that we are requesting. Go ahead. So you're going for Shorewood from an $86,000 contribution to 211,184, and that is on your levy. That's not borrowed.
And that's just for the equipment.
Just for the capital equipment, the vehicles. This gives you an idea of what's in that pot, if you're interested. I'm more than happy to share the whole presentation if you're interested at some point. Go ahead. The one option we are looking at currently to stair-step that increase in, which was information that has come forward since 2023, is to use some one-time revenue we have that we are waiting a payment from the state. I talked about the Medicaid reimbursement payments. They owe, they owe us for two back years right now, 2023 and 2024. We've been told we're going to get 2023 payment by the end of September, although we were told it was going to be June before that. One option that I'm supporting and recommending is if that payment comes through, which statutorily it needs to, it's just a matter of when, we offset the 2026 increase to stair-step it in. Because for communities like Shorewood, where you're taking that from your levy, there's some, it's a tougher where other communities are borrowing for that number. So it makes it, it's a little different in each of the seven municipalities, how it's managed. So that offset, could offset your number from 211,184 to 143,207.
So you said you'll know that by the end of September?
That's what the state tells me. But we were supposed to have money in June for that also.
This is, and this is also though, does this change if you increase those costs? If you charge more, like you, you do ambulance, someone falls in a nursing home, they call 911.
That would be a different, no, the fees.
That won't change this?
That won't change the capital. No. Go ahead. So more than happy to take questions. I probably took a little more than my five minutes.
It's a lot of information.
Yeah.
But why, why would it not change if you decided to charge the nursing homes? And we don't have a lot in Shorewood. We have like harbor chases, that is.
Trustee Stoker, would you mind just talking more?
I'm sorry. So what if we, what if you increase the charge to those facilities? For a nursing home call, someone falls down in a nursing home, 911 is called, no one on staff goes and helps them get upright?
Depends what facility. Facilities have gotten better and that's one thing with the case manager where we're struggling is we're looking at potentially having to lose that position and that position has done a lot of work with those facilities to reduce their reliance on us to do that.
But I guess I'm wondering, because we only have one facility, like compared to the rest of the North Shore. I don't know, it's.
The, the revenue.
Are we, I want to know, are we paying more because we only have one nursing home than all these other nursing homes in other communities? They're calling 911.
Your payment is proportionate, in my opinion. It's the, the nursing home fall issue that we had a couple of years ago has become much more managed than it has. Those facilities have become much better about how they manage their falls and their patients there. You, you could charge them, the, what happens is the charge goes down to the patient from personal experience.
Well, and so then it becomes a question of the, each person's insurance coverage.
Insurance will not pay unless we take people to the hospital by foot. The, they're not required to pay for ambulance transports unless you take them to the hospital.
Trustee Warren.
Which is completely backwards because you would think you'd want to keep them out of the hospital, but the system we live in.
I have a quick question. You noted a 40% increase in demand for ambulance.
What's your thoughts? Thanks.
Sorry. You noted a 40% increase in the demand for ambulance services over the course of the last 10 years.
Yep.
I was wondering, kind of a compound question here, so I apologize, but is that expected and normal? And if so, do we need to plan for, you know, fleet enlargement at these, these prices that you specified?
So the, I think it seems to be balancing out, coming to a, I guess, a tipping point, I'll call it, where we're not seeing the aggressive increases we saw for a couple of years, primarily right after the pandemic, we saw some significant increases. It seems to be coming to a, I guess, a slower pace of increase. As far as fleet, we have currently in the fleet wise, we have enough. We keep ambulances, what we call, because we take them in and out for maintenance and things like that. I think we're in a good spot at this point. I don't think we need to add fleet for that.
I think you kind of answered this, but I'm just wondering if that 40% is tied to something because it just, it just, it seems like a very large number for a kind of a small period of years. Is it pandemic related?
Some of it, it, and just from my experience has been what people would have called 911 for even 10 years ago is completely different than what people will call 911 for now. We have become a social service versus a emergency service.
Okay. Cultural shifts as well are.
Correct. Yeah.
And that's why the department, or in partnership with the health department, created a position that's sort of prevention oriented. And I'm thinking since you weren't on the board for the first presentation, we will have, we'll schedule another presentation. So that I, I do think that this issue is worth coming back for. It's not directly, it's a conversation that's been ongoing at the fire department board level. And I think it's a lot of really interesting information that the, that this current board would like to hear about. And I don't want to be responsible for presenting it. I want the professionals to do it.
Will never do that.
All right. Thank you.
You have seven ambulances?
We do.
And so, but you have, they're at three, three locations, right? Shorewood.
Five.
Five. Okay. And so why sometimes do two ambulances show up for a medical call?
So.
Instead of one? Instead of one?
Right. So we have what's a triaged dispatch system. So in other words, the 911 call taker asks certain questions for certain level of response. It's a single ambulance or a single unit response. That's a low level, low acuity call. Where two people can handle that call. There are higher acuity calls. I will, just for general conversation, someone who's having an active stroke, heart attack, where you need four to five people to manage that call, to remove the person from their home. A lot of times they're on second floor of a building. There, there's elevators, there's stairwells. So then we send a second unit for that.
And that's just standard of care in any first world country?
Yeah, that, we, we follow a county-wide dispatch protocol. So every county and all, every department in Milwaukee County follows that dispatch protocol.
And that's something that we could take in a future presentation that has to do with call prioritization.
Prioritization of calls. Got it.
I'm confused though. Did you say you want to add an ambulance or an ambulance crew?
We want to add another crew, so there's, we don't need another vehicle. I can do it with what I have at this point.
Eight FTEs?
Eight FTEs to cover the staff and time off 24/7.
Thank you.
You mentioned the really rapidly increasing cost of fire trucks and other equipment like that. And I, it's funny you mention that because I was just reading something about that the other day, but there's apparently like three companies that control the whole market. And I'm wondering, are they, are you guys looking at other alternatives? Like can you import them from other countries to modify for our system? Or is there some way to get around that?
We haven't, I've never looked at importing them. That'd be interesting to look at. The, there's currently class action suit against the larger three. I don't know where that's going to go. But that has been a challenge across the industry. And there hopefully would be some action on that, because I think there is some leverage, there's some, some real issues there.
Yeah. Is there any kind of like standards issue or legal issue that would prevent a fire department from just going, you know, going outside that system?
Nothing legal. There are professional, there are standards that are out there that probably, but in the law world would be considered, maybe you put yourself at a greater liability, not as well professional standard in the United States.
Yeah.
There probably are some-
Like you could still hook up to the same fire hydrants or-
You have to classify that. There are differences, but you'd have to purchase things that would, yeah.
Anything else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And next we have Executive Director Becky Rowland for the North Shore Health Department.
Hi.
Hi.
I think my presentation should be not as complicated. Our budget is a fraction of what fire is. But just to set the stage a little bit, the North Shore Health Department budget sustains a lot of unseen infrastructure. So whereas fire has, you know, call response times and how many places they've shown up. We work behind the scenes and track disease outbreaks and we conduct inspections so that people don't get sick. And so it's a little hard in the, to tangibly understand things and also tricky sometimes to talk about why we need more money. So our work behind the scenes though, really does avoid costly hospitalization and ensures legal compliance with the many required services that are laid out in statute. So despite a lean budget, our small and mighty team brings about 100 years of combined experience. And 100% of our team has public health, has a public health background. And some data in July nationally came out where 22% nationally of public health workforce has a public health background. So we have a rock star team. A little bit setting the stage, just so for, to jog your memories, if you don't know, our algorithm for funding is recalculated every five years. It's, it's a little bit similar to fire. It's a little less complicated. It's calculated 30% on usage, which we define usage singularly by communicable disease investigations. It's not a perfect representation, but it is, it's a good ratio that it is something that's representative in all seven communities and then 70% population. So municipal contributions are 40%, sorry, 47% of our budget annually. And Shorewood is about 10% of our total. We're about $1.1 million. So Becky highlighted that we're struggling a little bit, but I, to make the puzzle pieces fit. But so for some context, in July, I met with all the North Shore Village managers and requested consideration around a 13% increase, which I think made some jaws hit the floor, but it's really based on meeting those public health mandates. And the request stemmed not from mismanagement, but from funding cuts from the federal level. So long story short, we received about $210,000 of funding cuts, including some of the COVID money that did dry up. And so that was planned upon, but grant after grant has been decreased and we're, we're kind of scrambling to make up the difference. So it was clear pretty early on that 13% was not going to be feasible. And then in our intergovernmental agreement, 4.14% is the max that I can ask. And what's what I'm requesting from you all tonight. So it leaves me in a scenario where I have to be creative, but I think that we've taken the, a path of least resistance. And so we're, we're going to make do. So the 2025 Shorewood contribution to the health department was 111,480. And for 2026, I, it's a modest increase of $4,600. So let's see. I know that the chief mentioned our case manager position. It's a little bit in a space that is to be determined. It is funded by Milwaukee County partially and the fire department. And so all of those things are kind of in, in tentative spots. I'm confident that we'll have that role for at least a part of 2026, even if we can't make the money happen. My personnel costs have decreased about $100,000 with the caveat that only one person on my staff takes insurance. So if my, if anyone else really on my team took insurance, it would be a, a real struggle for me to, to figure out. I'll just knock on wood on that. And my, so my plan is a couple, there's, there's, sorry, there's a few prongs. One, we plan to increase our licensing fees for, let's see, our food establishments, hotels and pools by 15%. And so that'll come back to all the boards and it needs to be approved. So it's not a quick fix, but it will increase our revenues. Additionally, I have filed for and received a 501(c)(3) status for the North Shore Health Department Foundation, so I can pursue a wider variety of grants. So even in the last week, I've applied for several to try to make ends meet. We have a reduced rent cost in our new location that's shared with fire. And I spent a ton of time in 2025 getting in network with a variety of insurance companies so that we can bill for everything that we possibly can. So to sum up, we had a position, a nurse supervisor who was a more senior staff depart. So I guess serendipitously she moved to North Carolina to be closer to family, but that's kind of given us a little breathing room. So we haven't hired right away. She left August 1st and we plan to not replace her one-to-one. Instead, we'll replace her with a more junior staff or someone who comes in at .75 FTE. So that gives me a little relief to my budget. And then I have a part-time nurse who is limited term, who's excellent. And she can't take more on, so she will, her hours will be cut in half. So she'll be down to 10 hours a week, but she's excellent and we're still able to keep most of our folks in-house. So we're making do. It's a slim budget, but we're hanging in there. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you.
Sure.
Trusty Stoker.
Well, thank you for being creative and, and for helping keep our community safe. I just wanted to go back. So you, you previously, the Shorewood portion was 111,400. And you're asking for, it would be 116,000 in 2026?
Correct.
Okay. I do appreciate you looking at your staff because as Chief Whitaker mentioned, you know, staff is so important, but it is the biggest driver. And so I appreciate that it looks like you have, you know, while it's wonderful to have really qualified staff, maybe you're, you were overstaffed in terms of can people with less education who would command a higher pay do the same job? And while it's wonderful to have people with extra qualifications sometimes. So I appreciate, you know, that this woman left and you're, you know, you're making it work and the other person. I'm grateful for that creativity in staffing because that's, I think that, that shows that, that shows leadership. I, I hope that we can do the 4.14, but I, you know, this village has been slammed with fees and assessments and infrastructure costs and I will try.
Thank you. Trusty Warren?
Thank you for the presentation. It's very much appreciated.
Microphone. Yeah, microphone. Sorry. We had a meeting where we were cutting in and out, so it didn't hit the recording. So if you could just pull your mic closer every time you speak.
I'll, I'll pull the mic closer. Hey, thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it. I really appreciate the creative thinking around the 501(c)(3) status for the North Shore Health Department Foundation. I think that's a really good idea to get that status applied for grants. I was wondering, and maybe this is a bit of an impossible question, but with respect to grants, what are your expectations? What's the timing around those? You know, how big a, how big a dent could they make? In the budget? I guess dent's the wrong word, but how much could they contribute to the budget?
So this is really tricky because most private corporations or entities are not really interested in paying for government programs. They want their municipalities to pay for that. So that's where I'm getting creative. And so I'm really trying to be strategic and I'm asking between like 10 and $40,000 for each one that I apply for. And being pretty clear about sort of the unknowns that are currently existing in public health world. And so not banking on it, but trying to be creative. And I'd rather, I'm going to cast a wide net and ask for modest dollars to, to support programming, but I, it's sort of unknown. It's a new, it, I think I received the status in June or July, so. Still trying to figure it out.
Trusty McGovern?
No.
I'd just like to say that I've had the pleasure of having more contact with you in my position and with the North Shore Fire Department Board, because you usually address that, that board there. And you have been incredibly resourceful even before this year. So the fact that you are forced to be even more resourceful is amazing and I appreciate it. You work really, really hard. And you did before the change in administration.
I'd like, just for context, the city of Wauwatosa has 48,000 residents and they have 20 staff on their public health department. So we have, we serve 69,000 staff and we have eight. So, yeah. Just keep supporting us.
Yeah. So I will let the board know, I didn't think of this, but Chris Paterka is the Shorewood resident who represents us on the North Shore Health Department Board. And so if we would like to hear from her, getting a board member's perspective and kind of what those conversations are like, that's something that we could invite her to, or you're welcome. Everybody can reach out to her directly, but she would have that long-term perspective as well. And then the final is not so much around what you're asking for, but given the uncertainty around support or clearly a lack of support for public health. And you still have all the same mandates to meet. I do think us getting more educated, because to your point, a lot of it goes unseen. And so for our board to, and our community to be very clear and understanding about what public health mandates exist. And really coming together as a community and saying, what is, what will we tolerate, right? In terms of, of cuts, similar to other parts of the country are coming together around.
Um, I did produce a, a 20-page memo that I'm happy to share with the managers. I didn't just come out of the gate and ask for a 13% increase. There was a lot of justification and spelled out why and who and what. And so that does exist. I'm happy to share that. So, but it takes things through what is mandated by law for public health.
It, just so you know, Becky, that has been shared with the board previously, because as these discussions have been occurring, so and I'm happy to recirculate that as well.
Recirculate it, because I'm sure I remember when it dropped and then it's helpful hearing about this.
I have an updated version too, I'll send you, just based on our like accumulative conversations. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
You.
Are there other budget presentations?
You know, I'm just gonna, I don't believe I see Leanne Charnaud here. Oh, you did. Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. So maybe we'll just pause for a brief moment.
And is there anyone here this evening who would like to be heard, give comment on our discussion tonight in terms of the committee, the whole, the budget discussion? Okay. I would like to reserve a few minutes at the end before we adjourn. We are getting close, so. Actually, since we have a pause, would you like to come to the thing and, and please keep your comments to three minutes?
Yeah. My name is Christine Sueda and just to give background, I'm a Michigan CPA, a Wisconsin CPA, so-
Chris.
My whole career has been similar to yours.
Sorry, we're just, if you could just speak right into the mic, that'd be great.
It moves, so move it around, so it's your-
There you go.
So I went, I spent several hours today going through the preliminary budget. I understand it's a draft. But I wanted to come here to say that I think the team is doing a very good job. I like what I see. I think there are some gaps that have been talked about already. I was on video for the first part of it before coming down. And I just wanted to ask a cou, or point out a couple of things, because I know there's more iterations that will be coming. And as was noted earlier, there is a, over a $400,000 deficit right now. So there's a gap that, you know, we need to figure out. And we already have a tax increase from our last year, 7%. Normally it's 2%, but in these numbers is a 3%. So that means we'd have to increase it even more if we want to, or find some other parking, which I'm not adverse to.
One-time funds.
Yes, one-time funds. But I wanted to highlight, because it wasn't brought up, that the other financing uses line that's in this presentation indicates that from 2023, there was 200,000 and now it's almost a million, 934,000. And the, the change is significant, 7, 800,000. And 400,000 is principal, over 200,000 is interest. Interest rates have gone up. And there's also 100,000, which is called insurance on debt. I would like to know, what is that?
We can, if, if staff has that answer, typically, just so you know, Christine, typically we submit questions, technical questions like that in writing so that we can have the answers. If there's a, a brief answer right now, that's fine, but otherwise we need to move on to the other presentation.
Yes, I believe that was issuance of debt. Other financing sources is usually proceeds of debt, but over the past couple of years, that went up because of our streetlight charges and the vehicle E char, the vehicle charge that we implemented last year. And that's shown as another financing source, and then it's transferred out to the other funds that it's going to finance. So that's why it increased. And then it, it, it wasn't insurance of debt, it's issuance of debt. So those would be the debt proceeds as they're coming in.
All right, it's ready, but, okay. I also think it's worth noting that on this schedule that you have the detail on, there is, you know, it was zero funding balance and there's a growing amount of about 160,000. So when we do the revision, please make sure that it doesn't grow. Because I think that will also help us not have to increase taxes.
I guess, yeah. If there are any follow-up questions, if you could submit them in writing, we will get, get you the answers. And then they'll become part of our packet moving forward. Thank you. Is Leanne here? Hi, Director. Yes. So we, yeah, if you want to just talk to us about your, what you're requesting this year for your budget?
Thank you very much. I'm Leanne Charnaud. I'm the Director at Bayside Communication Center. I'm sorry, for our 2026 budget, we are at 2.7 million approximately. And of that, Shorewood accounts for 17.5% of the police calls that are handled by BCC. And Shorewood contributes 16.75 of our overall budget for BCC. So I also wanted to have this opportunity to talk a little bit about the things we're doing at BCC and I'll be brief. I know your time is precious. So our largest cost right now in BCC is our personnel. And obviously we have people that are senior, that have been there quite a while, at top of the pay scale. They're doing amazing work and I want to keep attributing them for their job that they're doing there. The other thing that is notable is our PSAP brand. So we are the designated PSAP. That means a lot of great things for us, but it also means sustaining technology and looking for innovative ways to serve all of Milwaukee County. So we're doing a lot of that right now.
Also what PSAP is?
I'm sorry, Public Safety Answering Point. So that's essentially defining- I'm sorry, Public Safety Answering Point. So that's essentially defining what a 911 center is that answers phone calls. We're very fortunate to be the designated PSAP grant. That means that we can look for innovative ways in Milwaukee County to support all of the area PSAPs. Some of the other great things that we're doing as part of that grant is we're creating a regional training center. One thing dispatches lacking is training across the board. So this year, we're hosting three classes that all came out of that grant. Next year, we just submitted the grant. We're looking at doing something very similar. And the large portion of it will go towards technology upgrades because technology is very pricey. So I with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have questions about the budget or specifically about BCC.
And what is the increase that you're expecting this year?
Our increase is 16.75% is for Shorewood. And it's a formula that's allocated that was agreed upon by all the agencies.
To be clear, is that the increase or is that the?
No, that's the percentage that Shorewood is paying, not the increase.
So I, is this in the package?
No, I don't believe the I think what they're looking for is the percentage increase from last year and that dollar amount.
Who this year? I know Andy just sent them out. He's finalizing our budget. I don't have the exact number.
Well, we look forward to getting the final number.
Okay.
And and, you know, anything you you might have that would explain what you do and
Yeah.
how your money is, especially this grant money you got. I believe you said it was for the regional training center and the technology. You're hoping you get another grant for that.
So we can apply for this grant every year. What it's doing is offsetting all of the technology that that we would have to pay for, and it's being paid for through the grant.
And who's your source for that grant?
It's through Department of Military Affairs.
Oh, through the?
Through the state.
Department of State?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other?
Thank you. And I believe in some prior communications, there was a request for the detail of the Bayside Dispatch budget. So when that and that increase is finalized, that information will be provided to the board as well.
Perfect.
It'll be an October 6th item?
It won't be an item, but I will forward it to you when received. And I would anticipate it's going to be finalized very soon.
Yeah, I know they're finalizing it right now, so it should be within the next week or so.
Because other line by line night, right?
Correct. A detail budget has been requested.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Any final questions for staff to bring back or anything? I want to thank everybody for their time, talent, and work this evening on this initial budget, the budget review. And I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee McGovern. Any objections? We stand adjourned at 7:27. We will we will convene the village board meeting at 7:30 promptly to. Good evening, everyone.
Is trustee Warren in the hallway? I hear a lot of chatter. Okay, excuse me.
All right, I'd like to convene the village board of Shorewood, Wisconsin at 7:32. We have present trustees Arndorfer virtually, trustee Warren, McGovern, Stokebrand in person, and President McCague. Trustee Ursink and trustee Kudo are excused for business travel. Has this meeting been publicly noticed?
The meeting has been properly noticed and posted according to law.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here and thank you for your time, talent, and patience as we conduct business this evening. We have a special order of business this evening and which is to which is ratification of the previously approved offer to purchase at 4448 and 4450 North Oakland Avenue from Spurrow Commercial LLC for the purpose of building affordable housing before the submission of a village Shorewood Phase II application for public financial assistance. So this item is really sort of a housekeeping in the sense that all the terms the board has previously discussed, the terms for the offer to purchase, and this is coming back to us, those terms have been met. We did not receive any requests for different terms from the trustees. We did, as you're aware, we have received an email to suggest that the village board take action to dissolve the TID-1 extension funds that have been set aside and return them to the taxing entities. That is not on the agenda for discussion this evening. It is not part of the ratification process. And so any comment pertaining to that is welcome under citizens to be heard. That action would require a future item of consideration to be on the agenda. So what we have in front of us is a ratification, a request to ratify. This is similar to negotiating terms for a contract for an infrastructure project and having those terms come back to us in final form. Typically, these things are on the consent agenda. I made it a special order of business because I know it's of great public interest. And so at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to ratify the previously approved offer to purchase.
I would make a motion. I move to I move ratification of the previously approved offer to purchase 4448 and 4450 North Oakland Avenue from Spurrow Commercial LLC for the purpose of building affordable housing before the submission of a village of Shorewood Phase II application for public financial assistance.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee McGovern, seconded by trustee Warren. Discussion from the board. I am eager to support this this step. It's an important step in being prepared for a WEDA application for the financing that is essential for this partnership. Trustee Arndorfer, do you have any comment? Okay, hearing none. Oh.
Yeah, sorry. Yes, I'm also supportive of proceeding. This is an important initiative. I do want to maintain, do want to maintain a place on the schedule and also, yeah, as I mentioned earlier, this is affordable housing is something that's been sought in this village for some time. I think this is probably our best shot at getting something off the ground that has come before us and want to proceed accordingly. Thank you.
Trustee Sobriant?
I will oppose this as I did at the initial vote, and I will repeat my my reasoning. I was I am part of the CDA, and I did approve this out of the CDA because as part of due diligence, I felt like it was our job as we are the housing authority for the village. And having sat through two years of meetings and looking at multiple options for trying to provide affordable housing, I think going into it, my first thought was we'd sure like to get more people in private homes in Shorewood. Secondly, if we couldn't do that, I wanted to see inclusivity. I wanted to see similar to the Light Horse where we do have affordable housing. We have subsidized affordable housing at the Light Horse. And you don't know who's walking in the building because it's a mixed use building. And I like that inclusivity aspect of it. We will not have that with this development. The other thing that I'm aware of, I think when we approved this at the time, no one understood how much affordable housing we do have in the village. We have 450 apartments for low income people in River Park. We have the buildings, the apartments in the Light Horse. And as recently as a couple of years ago, we had at least a dozen families using Section 8 vouchers, I believe, for affordable housing. So we are, it's my understanding, we are the outlier on the North Shore. We are the only municipality that has this level of low income and affordable housing in our village. And so not that you're ever really done, that it's it's something that's always a lofty goal, a worthy goal. The time right now is not right because of the crushing infrastructure costs we face. I don't think that it appropriately addresses the people in our community who now who are not upper income. They're perhaps the people who use that lot, my guess are more middle to lower income. And I think it's 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 difficult to tell those those people using that lot who use the car to get to work and their jobs and doctor's appointments and to get groceries and things like that. You know, you're going to take your sick child on the bus to the doctor. If you have a car, you're not. And the biggest thing, well, not the biggest, but a big concern for me is the county is cutting our bus service. And under that lens, I can't support this at this time.
Thank you. Trustee Warren?
I'll just keep my comments brief because I really do. First of all, thank you, everyone, for being here. It's great that everyone is involved and wants to have their voices heard. So I really appreciate everyone being here. And I'm eager to hear hear from the public. So I'll just keep it brief. You know, I was I was part of the original board to vote to keep the tit open in order to free up these affordable housing funds. Affordable housing has been identified time and again in the village. And I feel, you know, sitting on the CDA throne, I feel like we've really reviewed the actions extensively. And I feel like this is a good project that I want to move forward with. I certainly, you know, the trustee Stokebrand's point, we've discussed also extensively here, the 25% set aside to improve the village's housing stock, and we can use that to alleviate some of the burdens that we have with the with the older infrastructure. But I'm in support of moving this forward.
And I'd like to just add as well, you know, I've spoken many times in favor of this project and also in favor of additional market rate development. We've have a real severe shortage of housing in Shorewood nationwide. So one reason I'm supporting this is just to get additional units in the village. This is part of ongoing process back to 2021, pass seven to zero to set aside funding for affordable housing, really a historic vote, really probably the best thing that the I wasn't on the board, but I think that board, the best thing that they did, hands down, and really a historic vote in favor of taking a small step towards addressing our historic pattern of segregation in housing in Milwaukee County. We this is the most segregated region in the country. It was that way when I moved here in sixth grade. I remember my dad telling me about that not long afterwards. And I was thinking like, wow, that's sad to hear that there's this bad thing about this community that we moved to that I really love. So I'm in favor of addressing that. I'm in favor of getting more housing because it helps enroll more students in our district, and it helps generate revenue, helps bring in customers. But I just think it's it's a fairness issue to help generate more affordable housing. Some of the units that we do have already that are affordable are in rough shape. And I know from experience, the apartment that I shared with my now wife when we first moved back here, when I first moved back here and she lived here, I got to just some real talk. This was a shithole. And it had mold in the basement. It had giant chunks of stucco falling off the walls. And it was expensive. It was like 1425 a month. The landlord walked into her bedroom one time shortly after she got out of the shower, wearing nothing but a towel. She yelled at him to get out. He said, don't worry. Not something I'd never seen before. So she would have qualified for one of these nice new affordable units as a single mom of two back in 2015 when I met her. And I think we got to keep just keep in mind that, you know, I'm happy to bring in new residents to the village. There's people in Shorewood right now that need affordable units. And I myself, you know, just last Wednesday, found out I got laid off. And I went from in one day, making the most money I've ever made in my whole life as the breadwinner for a family of five, to now I would be eligible for one of these units as well with what I'll be getting for unemployment benefits and my wife's salary as a substitute teacher. So I think sometimes we're called upon to make land use decisions as a village board. And sometimes it's something that will help landlords. Sometimes it will help tenants. I'm always going to come down the side on helping out tenants and helping Shorewood grow. So I'm going to be voting enthusiastically yes for this project. This is just one little step in it. And I also got to say, I've been a little disappointed to see some of the posts on Facebook, I think, trying to portray this project in a very negative light. And the one thing I keep seeing is that the some people think the lot is worth a million and a half that we're going to either that we're talking about selling today for 333,000. The Baker Tilly financial analyst looked at it, and they didn't do a formal, formal analysis of formal, formal analysis of the value, just because it's really hard to find a it's hard to find a comparable lot for sale that can only be used for affordable housing or subsidized parking. And it's also kind of irrelevant because we're going to use this for a public benefit, which is affordable housing. So if we were going to build a new library or build a new village hall, we wouldn't first go out and see, well, what could we sell this if we decided to sell it for market rate housing? That's when it might be relevant. That's that's never been on the table here. We're not going to do a market rate development on this lot. So what we've come up with, you know, I would prefer to just keep the price low so that we have more cash available to use for out of that TID extension money. There's 2.1 million that we can use for affordable housing or 25% for laterals and other other things to improve the housing stock in Shorewood. So 333,000 that we're looking at tonight, it's certainly a subsidy. Baker Tilly estimated it'd be 500,000. I asked for clarification today. They said they weren't really sure, probably 400 to 600,000. So it is a subsidy. You don't build affordable housing without subsidies. I'd like to keep, you know, use that as part of the subsidy, that lot that we paid for in 1980, and it's paid off now, and keep that cash available for other housing and be more flexible. But, you know, I know a lot of you personally. You can always reach out to me if you have questions. I sit down and have coffee with a lot of you. So I would just say, if you see something on Facebook and you've got a question about it, and you think, is that right? Just ask me, you know, ask anyone of us, shoot me an email. I'll have coffee. I pay for my own coffee. I don't want anyone to accuse me of taking a bribe. And I'm not buying your coffee because I'm unemployed. But I would be glad to talk about this or any other controversial issue in person or by email or however you want to do it. But, you know, we're always here to talk. And with with that, I'm going to wrap up. I've probably gone on too long, but I'm going to be voting yes on this. And we'll have to see what the final application looks like. But I've been a very strong proponent of this project and other proposals for both affordable and market rate housing here in Shorewood, and I'll likely do the same as long as I'm on the board.
Thank you. All those in favor, this is not a roll call. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Against?
Aye.
So motion carries for one for ratification. So anybody who's here to speak on any matter that's not on the agenda, well, it's item eight citizens to be heard. So we should be there pretty soon. We'll move on to the consent agenda, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Warren. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to. Do not have any public hearings. So that does bring us to citizens to be heard. So at this time, we can hear from any citizens who would like to speak on a matter not on the agenda. So for example, if you anything that obviously, we've already ratified the option to purchase. But if there is something related to TID-1 funds that you'd like to speak to, please keep your comments to three minutes and come and speak into the microphone, saying your name and address. Thank you.
It's Christine Sueda. I'm at 4114 North.
We still need the microphone. Sorry. Sometimes it just doesn't pick up on the audio for the people online. So I just want to make sure people can hear you. Thank you.
You all have seen me attend all these meetings repeatedly to say this is not a good financial decision for the village. It's nothing to do with whether you want affordable housing or not. This is not a social thing discussion to me. It's a financial discussion. And if you call the vacant lot by Black Bear there, which is similar size to the parking lot, they are asking a million and a half. So there was no formal valuation. I don't think it's fair for you to cite Baker Tilly because they if they said that in an email, please send it. I would like to see that. I'm sure they didn't. And I think that's misleading information. I've never said we've had a formal valuation. And Kathy Stokebrand asked for that, but the board refused to proceed with that. And I think it's not right to to be careless with taxpayer assets and funds. As people may have heard when they were walking in, the budget shows a 400,000, over $400,000. As people may have heard when they were walking in, the budget shows a 400,000, over $400,000 deficit, which still needs to be solved. It also includes last year, a 7% tax increase and already a 3%, which typical is 2%. So is another increase coming or how are we going to fill that gap? There's more discussions, more meetings that will happen to solve that. But I think it's not responsible when I've presented to the board and sent emails to show that the state of Wisconsin, TIF experts, two of them have said that the funds, the TIF funds can be returned and it is legal. That means the schools would get over a million dollars, much more than a few people in this apartment building who may or may not have children and the state maybe gives two or $300 a student. We also lose all the revenue on the parking lot, which is a net revenue. We heard about that. There's 700,000 in that fund because it makes money.
Thank you.
All, all these reasons, I think that I don't understand why. I would like an answer, why hasn't the board considered returning the TIF money, which is financially the most responsible, especially since we have significant lead pipe replacement costs.
If you can finish up your comments, please.
Yeah, that's my question. Why won't the board defer this decision or reconsider it and think about what's really best for this community, which is giving a million dollars to the schools and over 600,000 to the village? Why won't that be?
We actually, trustee Stokbrand did ask the board to consider that and there wasn't a majority of interest to follow that through. So that's, that's how we, we moved on from that and we followed the, the process they were doing tonight. So if you could please stand to see if anyone else wants to speak tonight.
Jace Sorensen, 1916 East Kensington Boulevard. Are we allowed to talk about affordable housing? Because based upon what you just said earlier, we, we are not.
Mr. Sorensen, would you like to address the board? You have three minutes.
I would love to.
Please.
First off, this property is not being used for a library. It's being given to a private developer. That is very clear and it will be forever off. I'm sorry, I have the microphone.
Okay, fair enough.
It will be forever off the rolls of this village. I did some research. I like doing research. I like doing facts. And if anyone has any questions about the facts that I've been posting, please reach me.
Please just speak into your microphone. I just want to make sure that the, the comments are picked up on the recording. Thank you.
U.S. Housing and Urban Development defines low income as 80% of the adjusted median income. In Shorewood, we have about 24% of our households are low income. What amazes me about this affordable housing, I'll call it a debacle, is first off, it gives below market rates rents to about 13 units. The rest of the units, based upon my research, are at market or above market. So what's happening here is that for those 13 or 19 units, 19 units, I correct, I stand corrected, 19 units, we're going to spend millions of dollars to provide those lower rent, lower rents for those 19 units. We have approximately 1,600 households in this community that are lower income. What you're proposing to do with the budget this year is to raise taxes for everyone in the village, including 1,600 low income households to benefit these few households. I just don't understand the logic behind that. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard?
Would anyone else like to be heard?
Lauren Lamute, 2736 East Newton Avenue. This is my first time attending one of these and my apologies for not coming more often. But I felt the need to show up tonight because I grossly disagree with this decision. I do not believe it's in the best interest for the village and certainly not for me. And with this decision, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when my family leaves. We've been here for about 10 years. We love it. We love our neighbors. We love our kids' school. But financially, this is a gross misuse of opportunity for the village. And I think, you know, if we can't take care of ourselves and our infrastructure, how are we supposed to take care of others? And it reminds me of the, the whole makeover show where they'd come in, they make over your house and people get to move into a brand new home, but it's crumbling underneath because they don't take care of the foundation, infrastructure first. And if that's what we're going to do, I don't think we're going to go very far and no one's winning. Thank you.
So I am gonna, I understand that there are a lot of strong opinions here. And I understand that you want to support each other. But I will say that clapping in response to comments is not a good use of our time. And I think it's also important to remember that some people may take exception to your comments. So if you can speak respectfully of other people and the work that we're trying to do in the village, that would be appreciated.
Barbara Kylie Miller, 4051 North Downer. I just wanted to address a comment that trustee McGovern made about segregation. Milwaukee County is one of the most highly segregated communities in the country. It's been that way for decades. I don't think our 1.6 square miles is going, no matter what we do, is going to fix that problem as much as say, as an inner ring suburb, as much as a community that has more vacant land, whether that's New Berlin or Brookfield or another community. But I also thought that when, if and when these affordable apartments are built, a landlord cannot rent to someone on the basis of race. And so if that is a problem that you are trying to fix, making an apartment affordable is, is not going to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? All right, hearing none, we will close citizens to be heard and move on to new business. So item, item one in new business is pertaining to an ordinance for stop signs. I apologize, I'm having trouble finding that page. Could somebody read the agenda item, please?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Item nine A is consider ordinance number 3075, an ordinance removing yield signs. I'm just going to start over. Consider ordinance number 3075, an ordinance removing yield signs controlling north lark and traffic at East.
Christina, I'm sorry, we actually can't close the doors because it's an open meeting. Oh, okay, sorry. Oh, okay. So I guess you can't. So thank you. Try again.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try this one more time. Third time's a charm. Consider ordinance number 3075, an ordinance removing yield signs controlling north lark and traffic at East Olive Street and replacing with stop signs and adding stop signs controlling traffic on East Olive Street. I know that Director Butchlick is on the call tonight. Is there any other additional comments? And there are none additional from her. So the ordinance is.
Would you like, I'm sorry, I can't, I mean, let's, yeah, you can.
As long as it's not locked, fine.
Yeah, it's fine. It won't, it won't last much longer. So can you acknowledge in the minutes that trustee Arndorfer left the meeting at 7:58, please? Click Carol. All right, I have my agenda pulled up correctly. So consider ordinance number 375, 3075, an ordinance removing yield signs controlling north lark and traffic at East Olive Street and replacing with stop signs and adding stop signs controlling traffic on East Olive Street. This item comes to us from the Public Works Committee. There was a multi-item traffic and parking request submitted by a resident that was brought to the Public Works Committee for review. And this was the recommendation coming out of that request. So I think that it's pretty straightforward. We've, we've handled these before. If there's anybody who would like to be heard on this matter this evening, I welcome you to come to the podium for your, with your name and address. Yes? Come on up.
Good evening. This is my first meeting, so this is a beautiful building you have here. My name is Jeff Kinnell. I live at 1525 East Olive Street. So I live right on the corner of Olive and Larkin, the southwest corner. So my wife and I, we moved here about eight years ago and we love Shorewood. And, but the intersection where we live now is just, there's a lot of traffic there. Traffic has really increased over time, whether it's the supermarket. And now that we have a five-year-old and a six-year-old, our, our kids are not safe to play in the front yard, in the front yard of our house, given all the traffic that is going through there throughout the day at night. And so I felt it was important to come to this meeting and have my opinion heard and just let the committee know that, you know, I, we are very much in favor of improvements in traffic flow in that area. And so I'm not an expert, but I think that intersection, we don't feel as safe for our kids to play outside. And so whether they're riding their bikes or playing in the front yard, we feel that it would be the right thing to do, to do something to improve the traffic.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Warren?
First off, thank you for your comments and I'm, I'm kind of your neighbor. I'm in Olive and Murray. So, so I, I drive that route almost daily and I know that people use Olive essentially as a cut through in the village. So I agree with you, cars, cars go fast down Olive, you know, from, from your house to my house, there's a lot, just a lot of traffic, a lot of traffic, traffic moving quickly. So I very much support and think traffic calming measures. I think the, I think the recommendation here is, is putting in stop signs. I think that's a good recommendation because I see it every day and I, I completely sympathize with your concern that your, your children can't play in the yard because cars are going fast.
Like, you know, it's not safe for me to cut my grass in there. When I'm cutting my grass and I'm, you know, going down the street, I mean, cars are going by me 40, 50 miles.
Yeah.
And so just.
Yeah, that's like the cut through of the village. People use it as a gun, so.
Yeah, I'm going to support this as well. It's, that intersection does seem unusually wide and I was, we discussed it at the DPW level. It's really surprising to see that, hear that it's actually the same size as all the others because it feels really wide. And, you know, so I think the, the stop signs, you know, that's not really an ideal solution. I'd prefer to see bump outs or raised crosswalk or something like that. And there's a lot of things like that in the works in the new bike and pedestrian safety study or plan. There's also other communities around the region have adopted policies where neighbors can join together and vote for a special assessment to pay for some of those things. So I'm in favor of exploring that here as well, but I'll, I'll be voting yes on this today, even though it's kind of a imperfect solution to this.
Trustee Warren?
And just to reemphasize the point, I agree with trustee McGovern. You know, this, this is a good start and we'll, you know, see if there are other solutions that we can put into place down the line. But certainly I, I like doing something in the short term here because it is strange to hear that that intersection is the same, it has the same proportions as others because it feels bigger and as a result of feeling bigger, people go faster through it.
Thank you. Trustee Stokbrand?
Was there discussion or recommendation from staff? I'm sorry if I should have seen it in the packet and I missed it, about how we could make this safer. I mean, the tapper doesn't do traffic calming. So we have to go through the two-year with this new policy, we have to go through a two-year budget process if we want to do any traffic calming. This is extremely unfortunate. So I will be voting for this. But I mean, honestly, you know, places like Madison, you would plop down a traffic circle there with a bunch of hardy perennials. I know it's not great for maintenance, for snowplows, but it's hard to kill goldenrod. I mean, I just think, I hope that we can find some way to respond more creatively and more quickly with something besides a stop sign because basically you just need to slow the cars down. And it seems shortsighted that this is, this is, this is what we're left with. But I'll vote yes. We've got to have a better, we've got to have something better, faster.
I appreciate all the comments, but continued discussion about other things that we can do really gets us out of scope of our agenda this evening. And so as we've noticed, the, this is what we can do within reason now. And so I think I'd like to close comment and take a vote on this.
Yeah, I can just make a motion. And again, we, just to, we're all saying the same thing, but we shouldn't have residents coming to us saying, I'm, I can't cut my, I'm afraid to cut my lawn. I mean, that's something where we really need to look at solutions. But I'll, in the short term, we can, we can make sure we get this done tonight. So I, I'll try. I move to approve ordinance number 3075, an ordinance removing yield signs controlling north lark and traffic at East Olive Street and replacing it, replacing with stop signs and replacing with stop signs and adding stop signs controlling traffic on East Olive.
All right, motion by trustee Warren, seconded by trustee McGovern. We've already discussed this, further discussion? Okay, all those in, oh, this is a roll call vote.
President McKay?
Aye.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Aye.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Motion carried for zero.
All right. Thank you for being here this evening. Moving on to item nine B, consider pilot program for multiple block closure of North Morris Boulevard for trick or treat. So this has been discussed extensively at the committee level. It might've come to the village board and then remanded back to committee. There's some additional, so everything's in the packet. And there's some additional information from trustee Ursink that he has located someone who would serve, you know, kind of as a block captain for the, the event. And so if we, if this passes as a pilot program this evening, as following the block party permitting process, then it would rely on one of the neighbors from that block to follow the, the process moving forward. So the action that we're asking to consider is a pilot program for a multi-block event closure with the guidelines set forth and recommendations from staff. And so I'll turn it over to the, the board at this time.
So what, I just, it's a one-year pilot?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and this is one in committee, we kind of went back and forth on. We weren't really sure how to bring it up to the board, you know, with a recommendation or not. And I think I ultimately moved to make the recommendation in favor of, of allowing this just because it's something that seems that the residents want. And I think it's always nice when you can have a street just be open to pedestrians. I was thinking a lot about that today. at, this weekend with the Shorewood Feast, you know, we, when you can just open the street to people, especially when there's times of a lot of traffic, it's safer. It's just a nice way to celebrate Halloween, I think, so. I think one of the sort of drawbacks we had was not having somebody kind of be in charge in it, of it, but it looks like Arthur has resolved that issue, so I'm gonna support this today because it's, I just think it'll be a nice way to celebrate Halloween on that block and that I think it's something would be nice to try out this time and see how it goes and maybe do more of them next year if it's successful.
I think this is in the packet, but just to get it on the record, so we have, we have heavy vehicles blocking, blocking the four streets that lead to this North, North Morris Boulevard corridor, from what I'm seeing. And there's also, just to confirm, there's a communication plan to the residents of North Woodburne, given that they'll be impacted by increased traffic during Halloween. And if those two things are true, and I'm assuming they are, I think that was in the packet and just getting on the record, I would support this. I think it is interesting as a pilot. It's a one-year pilot and we'll see how it works. But it strikes me as kind of a nice block party feel on Halloween. And I'm also heartened to hear that trustee Ursink has found someone to serve as a captain. I know that was a concern previously is when it came here a couple of months ago, but now that that has been alleviated, I'm prepared to support this.
And so to be clear, what we're approving this evening is that there would be a pilot program for a multi-block party, according to staff recommendations, if a neighbor comes forward to pull the permit and then meets all the criteria for the event to occur.
Okay, so there's still a step in there that somebody
Yes.
has to take charge of.
Somebody from the neighborhood has to actually take the lead and complete the paperwork and, and all of that. And then staff has to check off to make sure that everything's in place.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
So if someone on Morris doesn't want to be part of the Halloween thing and wants to get out, it's just sort of like we do at my house when there's the lakefront marathon. You just move your car across the street because you know it's coming, right?
Right.
That will, will someone, will everybody on Morris will know, but what about these kitty-corner streets? What's the one that turns east from Olive to Morris? Like if there's, if there's a driveway there, will those people know?
Right.
How do they know?
Yeah.
If you want, if you don't want to be in this party, you need to move your car.
Right.
I don't know.
So that, as a part of the standard block party permit, they're required to provide notification to everyone within the area. So this would be an expanded scope to include those streets that are gonna line up and then have some type of a closure. Signatures will still be required as a condition, as typical with a regular block party permit as well. And then we will, we've required, you know, the keys and the placement of heavy vehicles on premise during the block party that would be provided by property owners within, within the area, as well as having the block party captain go through a safety meeting review and plan with the police chief prior to the event.
I just, I'm looking at these barricades and I wonder again why we don't have any of the new modular vehicle barricades that make streets safe from vehicles, chases or whatever you might have. I just, this looks like we're just not where we need to be with our equipment. And I, I hope we can fix part of that in the, at the budget for the criterion, for this kind of thing, for the feast and for the Fourth of July parade. We need to up our game on our barricades.
Thank you.
Can I provide one just additional comment and clarification? At the time of writing this memo, this topic has been ongoing in discussion for a lengthy period of time. If there is a, a block party permit submitted with these qualifications, I'd request that it be in by October first in order to provide for sufficient coordination.
Yes, and also if in the process of getting signatures in the neighborhood or on the blocks that are impacted, should they be unable to get enough signatures, you know, enough support for it? Obviously, it wouldn't be able to move forward.
So if we pass this, does that mean the pilot option is still there like for next year? Or no?
No, it's just for this year. It's giving them permission to pursue a permit for this type of event because we currently, we don't have that option, but they still have to go through all the steps of a block party.
I guess my question was, we've gone this far, if now for some reason they can't get their ducks in a row by October one, I, they do have two weeks. I don't know how long Arthur's on, but it would be a shame to go through all this again. You just pull the same documents, I guess.
Right, we could, right, we can reconsider it next year. Okay.
I think I can probably I can probably make a motion.
Yes.
Last page of the memo. It's a little bit of a small paragraph.
I've got it. I've got it if you don't.
Do you want, do you want, I think you're more prepared than I am to make the motion, so.
Oh, wait. Attachment. I'm sorry. Okay, is it with the three bullet points?
Yes. Yep.
I move to approve a multiple block party permit process to be piloted in twenty twenty-five on Morris for Halloween with only, only with barricade forward slash large vehicle placement on the map attached, specified location of keys for heavy vehicles on premises during the block party, parentheses mid-block of the closure, and parentheses, and block party captain's safety meeting review with the police chief prior to the closure.
I'll second that.
All right, we have motion by trustee Stockbrand, seconded by trustee Warren. We've already discussed, but any further discussion? Anyone who would like to be heard on this matter? Hearing none, this will be a voice vote, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. That concludes new business, so we can move on to reports of village officials, village president. He attended the ICC meeting on September eighth. There was an extensive presentation from Director Schaefer of the MMSD on the, the storm. It was really impressive. All the investments in green infrastructure performed exceptionally well during this serious event. And even with that, there was ten million dollars worth of damage to, throughout the MMSD system. However, the plant continued to operate even though it exceeded its capacity for stormwater management. So I just have to say, we're pretty lucky in Milwaukee that we have the leadership in that regard and that we should continue making those investments. Also, our statistics from Shorewood looked pretty good because of all the investments that we've made, so. With that, there's also a proclamation celebrating National Hispanic American Heritage Month, which begins today. Whereas National Hispanic American Heritage Month celebrates the history, culture, and contributions of American citizens with ancestries from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas Hispanic American Heritage Month began as Hispanic Heritage Week in nineteen sixty-eight, with September fifteenth being selected as the starting point to honor the anniversary of independence of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. Mexico, Chile, and Belize also celebrate their independence days on September sixteenth, eighteenth, and twenty-first respectively. And whereas the village of Shorewood is committed to honoring our brothers and sisters in the Hispanic American community and reaffirms Shorewood's vision to achieve racial equity. And whereas whether their ancestors have been here for generations or if they are among our newest residents, we recognize that Hispanic heritage is American heritage and our brothers and sisters in the Hispanic American community represent a rich history of culture, country and culture. Now therefore, I Anne McKay, Shorewood Village President, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, to be Hispanic American Heritage Month throughout Shorewood and recognize the important contributions of Hispanic American individuals and communities to Shorewood. Thank you. That concludes my report. Moving on to the village trustees. Do you have any reports this evening?
I mean, not a formal report, but I was at the, the Shorewood Feast this weekend and then the very next day was at the farmer's market, just a perfect day for the farmer's market, so shout out to Arthur, he's not here today, but just really appreciate his, his leadership and really, there's just so many people that put time and their effort into both of these events that really add a lot to the community, so just a kind of an appreciation.
I'd second trustee McGovern. I was, was at the Shorewood Feast event as well. I live a block away. It was an incredible event. I was a little concerned with the thunderstorms at eight in the morning, but the weather cleared up and it was gorgeous.
All right. Village manager? No report. All right, moving on to item eleven, future items of consideration. We do have one item from trustee Stockbrand to consider modification to streetlight operation special charge to utilize shortest side of corner lots for determining lineal feet. So we, so I'll just remind you that the purpose of future items is to take action to get them on the agenda, a future agenda. It is not to discuss whether you support the issue or not. That would be out of scope and we're not agended for that. So at this time, trustee Stockbrand, do you want to say anything in addition to giving us information about this?
No, I guess I just was hoping that we could mirror what happened in the appeals process and I, this is my shot at doing so. I I think it'd be good to go through the process to see, you know, would we rather have a minimum or a maximum, like a minimum of forty to sixty or something depending on the lot? So, but I think we, we need to have a discussion about it because clearly when I believe twenty-four parties appealed and I believe twenty-two were granted, we should look at, at this policy.
Thank you. All right. Would you like to make a motion?
I move that we, do what, do you want me to make a motion that it go to a committee or just that it?
Yeah, I think going to committee.
See, this is where I can, like
I, can I make a request?
Yes, please.
I would welcome an opportunity to have it back at the full board.
Oh, okay, make it at the full board. So we'll agenda it for full board in the future.
And then it would go to a committee after that or?
No, it would just go to the full board.
Okay. Because this is, it's really, I can see it, it's one of those spaces between public works and finance. So I'm happy to do that. I move that we, I move that we can, the full board consider modification of a streetlight operation special charge to utilize the shortest side of corner lots for determining lineal feet.
I'll second it.
Motion by trustee Stockbrand, seconded by trustee Warren. Any discussion?
Yeah, I agree that this is important, that we formalize this. In a sense, we kind of already adopted that policy at that meeting and there, there are a number of other people who just haven't appealed yet or don't know about it, so I think out of fairness, we have to just be consistent. And we'll need the financial analysis too because I'm sure it's gonna change the budget going forward. So yeah, I'll be looking forward to working with the whole board.
All right, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries to put this on a future agenda item according to business cycle. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any objections? We stand adjourned at eight twenty-one. Thank you, everyone.